A call to order, the North Aurora Village Board Meeting of Monday, December 2nd, 2019, and we'll open with silent prayer meditation. Please join me, a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Bosco, are you going to be doing our roll calls this evening?
I will, thank you. Trustee Gaitley?
Here.
Trustee Martinez?
Here.
Trustee Carroll?
Here.
Mayor Berman?
Here.
Trustee Curtis?
Here.
Trustee Lowry?
Here.
And Trustee Gaffino?
Here.
We have three public hearings this evening. The first is our truth in taxation for 2019 property tax levy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our annual hearing on our 2019 property tax levy. If anyone in the public would wish to speak and address on it, now's the time.
Is there anyone here to speak on? I declare our hearing closed, and item number two in public hearing is our property tax levy increased greater than 5% for the Timber Oaks Special Service Area Number Eight.
Thank you. This public hearing is necessary because the proposed tax levy for special service area for the Timber Oaks Number Eight is increasing by more than 5% from the previous year. So if anyone would wish to address that, now would be the time to do that.
Is there anyone to speak for that? I declare our hearing closed, and hearing number three is on property tax levy, 5% North Town Center Special Service Area Number Thirty-Two.
Thank you, yes. This is also because the proposed tax levy for the Special Service Area Thirty-Two for the North Aurora Town Center is increasing, proposed to be increased by more than 5% of last year.
Anyone to speak? I declare public hearing number three closed. Audience comments? Trustee comments? Consent agenda?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Gaitley?
Yes.
Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
And Trustee Gaffino?
Yes.
And under new business, item number one, Mr. Hannah.
Thank you. Item number one is separate approval of a small portion of the Messenger Public Library for 2% maintenance. That's actually wrapped into the next agenda item.
Motion approved. Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Gaitley?
Yes.
Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
And Trustee Gaffino?
Yes.
Item number two?
Thank you. Item number two is approval of levy for the Village in North Aurora and the Messenger Public Library for the 2019 levy. The total amount is $4,826,863. This takes into account the 1.9% CPI factor and the estimated small amount of new construction that was anticipated to be captured under that tax levy for the 2019 year. For the Village only, actually, the estimated actual amount for next year is going to go down from the prior year by about seven... It's going to go down because of debt service for the library, the final debt service payment is $130,000 less than the previous year. So when taking that into account, the actual estimated extensions are going to go down about $78,000. As we'll get into with agenda item number eight, we're proposing reducing this final debt service payment for the library bonds by an additional $115,000 using accumulated debt service reserve funds. So in effect, that would decrease the village's portion of the tax levy by about 6.3% of the tax bill, just the village's portion for next year. That would roughly equate to about $25, $45 per home based on the assessed valuation.
Is that a $25 increase per home or a $25 reduction?
The total village portion of the property tax bill, which is about solely 6% of the total tax bill, that would be going down about $25 to $45 based on the individual property's assessed value.
So would you say it's fair to say that there is no tax increase on the village's portion of property taxes then?
True. For sure. Not only no increase, but definitely a decrease. There may be a rare situation where a property increased a tremendous amount in value, and that situation, they would have a greater burden of the tax bill. But in most situations, you'll see around a $25, $45 decrease in the village's portion of the property taxes extended for 2019.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Gaitley?
Yes.
Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Gaffino?
Yes.
Item number three, Bill.
Thank you. Item number three is approval of taxes for the Waterford Oaks Special Service Area Number Four in the amount of $8,600 for routine maintenance.
Motion approved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Gaitley?
Yes.
Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Gaffino?
Yes.
Item number four, Bill.
Item number four is approval of the SSA levy of taxes for the Timber Oaks Special Service Area Number Eight in the amount of $7,500.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Gaitley?
Yes.
Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
And Trustee Gaffino?
Item number five, Mr. Hannah.
Item number five is approval of SSA for the Pine Creek Special Service Area Number Nine in the amount of $2,000.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Gaitley?
Yes.
Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Trustee Lowry? Yes.
Trustee Gaffino?
Item number six, Bill.
Approval Will Lake's Special Service Area Number Eleven, again for maintenance in the amount of $200.
Motion approved. Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Gaitley?
Yes.
Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
Trustee Kurt... Sorry, Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Gaffino?
Yes.
Item number seven?
Item number seven is approval of 2019 tax levy for the North Aurora Town Center Special Service Area Number Thirty-Two in the amount of $30,000.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Gaitley?
Yes.
Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
And Trustee Gaffino?
Yes.
Item number eight, Bill.
Item number eight is the first of three abatement ordinances. This is referring to what I was referring to earlier when we were further reducing the library debt service payment. This ordinance would further abate that final library debt service payment by an additional $115,000. Just want to also note, next year for 2020, we won't have any levy for outstanding debt service for property taxes. So this final payment will see a further reduction in the village's portion of the total tax bill for 2020, meaning that we won't have any payment whatsoever related to outstanding GO bonds.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Gaitley?
Yes.
Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Trustee Lowry? Yes.
And Trustee Gaffino?
Item nine, Bill.
Item number nine is an approval of ordinance abating the taxes for the 2014 refunding our alternate revenue source bonds that were originally issued and paid back with sales tax revenue to fund construction of the police station. This just formality abates the property taxes related to that bond issuance.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Gaitley?
Yes.
Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
And Trustee Gaffino?
Yes.
And item number 10, Mr. Hannah.
Thank you. Item number 10 is approval of an ordinance abating the taxes for the $5.8 million in general obligation alternate revenue source bonds for Series 2017 used to fund various water improvements, and this just confirms we're using water revenues to repay those bonds.
Motion approved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Gaitley?
Yes.
Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
And Trustee Gaffino?
Yes.
Item number 11, Mr. Bosco.
Thank you, sir. Item number 10 tonight on the agenda is the July 3rd fireworks for the Fox River Firework Show that we put on in North Aurora Riverfront Park. We are looking to use the same company as we've used in the past, Melrose Pyrotechnics, for the same dollar amount, $25,000, which is what we paid last year. Like last year, we like to lock the contract in a little early because we'd like to do it to music again, and they liked us to give them some lead time so they can start putting music together for the show and choreograph it.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion?
I just got a question. Have we... Did we talk to them about piggybacking North Aurora Days fireworks on that, or was there some discussion a few years ago?
There was. I don't think there was a cost savings when we looked at it. If I remember correctly, it was... I mean, we were only paying about $10,000 for North Aurora Days, and I don't recall them saying that there was a cost savings by having two together.
I just know they have a good show, too, and it's always a crapshoot on North Aurora Days that, you know, if we could put them both together... That's all. Just my thought.
Do you want me to call Melrose and ask them about...
Possibly. I don't know if they would... If there's any more leverage not signing this and asking them, or maybe they don't... Maybe there wouldn't be. But I kind of recall there wasn't the last time we talked, right? They were like...
Yeah, if I remember, it was about two years ago, and I don't think there was any real savings, which is why at the time we were between two companies, and we chose one for North Aurora Days and one for...
Right. Well, I'm just wondering if their quality is better, even if it's the same. I don't know. Just thinking. Maybe outside of this, but maybe...
Okay. I mean, we... From North Aurora Days, we, you know, absolutely can call them and see if they would be willing to do that for a price.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other discussion?
Well, should we table this until... And not sign an agreement until we find out from North Aurora Days?
Well, we can do that if you want me to call Melrose and see what they would like to do for North Aurora Days and see if there's any cost to put that in there.
There was a deadline. They asked on, "We do this now so that they can..."
There was a deadline? Is that what...
Yeah. Well, they wanted it done by early. They wanted it done by the end of the year. I mean, we still have one meeting left in December, so, I mean, I can... It's not that hard of a deadline. I mean, I can call Melrose if the board feels that that's the way to go. We can table this item, and I can bring it back.
Well, you can also say that, gee, if they're going to do that, they can take that off our next...
Yeah.
North Aurora Days.
I think we'd probably have more leverage if we didn't agree to the contract already. You know what I mean? To negotiate with them.
I think the last time we asked them, they're like, "That's fine, but we're not cutting you a deal," but I just thought we'd ask again, you know? I mean, they are good quality. They're kind of the benchmark fireworks people, so I just thought that from who we had at North Aurora Days, if we could roll it all together, and I don't know if there'd be a savings or not.
I guess it depends on North Aurora Days' budgeted amount for fireworks, because typically in the past years, we've done 12,000. I think when we were upset with the show a couple of years ago, we were... They deducted 2,000, I think it was, from the show at that time, and then I want to say this last year, they charged us 10 in order to, you know, try to prove their worth again, so to speak. So they had two years where we had a reduced rate with our other company. So I'm assuming this year we go back up to 12,000. I'd be more than happy to see, you know, what they can do, what Melrose can do.
Is the length of the show any different between North Aurora and July?
No, the length of the show is actually very similar. It's usually about 16 to 18 minutes long. Sometimes it can go 20. We try to keep it around 16 to 18 minutes. When you start getting beyond 20 minutes, it starts to...
It's just the size of shells that are different.
It is. And that's the... And that's the other thing, too. What makes it hard to compare North Aurora Days fireworks show to this fireworks show or any fireworks show is anyone can give you a cheaper amount on a contract and say, "Sure, I'll give you..." I mean, Melrose can come back and say, "Sure, we'll discount your show for North Aurora Days for $8,000," but you might get less of a show because the shell counts change and the special effects. So fireworks are extremely difficult to compare on paper, and that's... And I think that's what Trustee Gaffino was saying, was Melrose has done a really good job, at least in the staff's mind, the last two years for the Fourth of July fireworks. Maybe that translates if the board wants to see that at North Aurora Days. I think that's what the discussion is.
I'd rather just see... I'd rather just vote on this than lock them down. That would probably make sense. Prove this tonight and...
Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
And then talk to them and...
And it doesn't hurt to ask what kind of price they could give you, you know?
Sure.
I would think.
Sure.
So there's no motion to...
Motion in a minute, second, to pass.
Well, Mr. Gaitley, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Gaffino?
Yes.
And item number 12, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 12 tonight is a tip reimbursement for the property at 24 South Lincoln Way, which would be Mocha Coffee in the amount of $200,000. As a quick reminder, this was before the Operations Committee and the committee as a whole. At the last time it was discussed was at the last meeting on the 18th of November, and this was... The request was for $232,000 and some change in regard to site work that was done for the development of the property, which amounted in about $1.1 million in the purchase of the land and the cost to build. After the board discussed it, the original agreement that was brought as a draft was five years, which was basically a step down for the total amount, with the most being the first year, and then little by little, the amount would get less and less. The village board decided that the... An agreement for five years with a total amount of $200,000 at $40,000 a year seemed to be the way that the board would like to go with a draft agreement, which is before you tonight. And there's a couple of conditions in that agreement before you, which includes the property has to remain in good condition, the owner has to pay taxes and utilities on time, the business has to be in continued operations for the full five years of the reimbursement, and that he has to maintain ownership of the property.
Steve, I thought we... Are we paying... What is the yearly amount?
$40,000. So it's to be five years, $200,000, $40,000 a year reimbursed.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Second. Discussion? And Trustee Gaffino?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
And Trustee Gaitley?
Yes.
Item number 13, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 13 before you tonight is approval of an ordinance granting a special use for the adult-use cannabis dispensing organization at 161 South Lincoln Way. This is for pharmacists operating that location as Veralife. They're looking to be a recreational marijuana dispensary. This has been before the Plant Commission and the Committee of the Whole. The special use is in front of you tonight. There are some conditions on that special use that include that they have to follow the state laws in regards to sales of recreational cannabis and medical cannabis. There can be no onsite consumption. They have to work with the village on parking solutions and the business owners around them for at least the first week or so that they're open, when we expect traffic to be at a higher volume. They have to enclose their dumpsters and clean up the parking lot areas by filling the dumpster... Filling the potholes in their parking lot.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion?
I just had a question. I thought I read it in here. I just want to confirm it, that like, was it rolled into that? If somebody has... Gets stopped with the cannabis, that could be a local ordinance violation and stuff like that, like adjudication versus the state?
Yeah, that's actually in the next item.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
It's okay. But that's a good question. The next item is actually to clean up our current ordinances to be in line with the state.
Then the other question I had was, I thought I read somewhere where it says... I can't find it right now. But as far as smoking in somebody's house without permission or place, and then also said "in business," is that correct or...
You mean that they can't smoke in someone's business?
Yeah.
Correct.
Without their permission.
Well, you can't smoke in the...
Yeah.
You can only smoke pot in your residence anyway.
Well, I was wondering why that was in there, then. It was under... Let's see.
That's also in the... In the next ordinance that relates to the enforcement of the laws.
Okay, maybe I jumped ahead then. Not allowing that.
Right.
Right? Is that right?
Yeah, this is for the zoning special use.
Okay.
The next one is...
Always then.
Yeah. Right. And you might find it there.
Any more discussion? Trustee Gaitley?
Yes.
Trustee Martinez?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
No.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Lowry?
Yes.
Trustee Gaffino?
Yes.
All right. Item number 14, Steve.
Thank you. Actually, item number 14 I'm going to give to Chief Fisher.
Thanks.
Very good.
This deals with approval of the ordinance amending Chapter 9.38 of the North Aurora Municipal Code Regarding Cannabis and Paraphernalia Control. Due to the passage of the new cannabis law in Illinois, which takes effect January 1st, 2020, we had Attorney Drendel's office review the North Aurora Code provisions that deal with cannabis. Of course, the new law provides for the cultivation, manufacture, distribution, possession, and use of cannabis within certain limits. Thus, this code will now revise all of those items, the cultivation, manufacture, distribution, possession, and use of cannabis, which will bring it in... Our new ordinance will now conform to the state laws, and it will also allow officers' flexibility to write either local tickets or state tickets in any manner that's considered a misdemeanor. Flexibility is also allowed in the writing of traffic tickets in certain circumstances. It's basically, it's the way we operate right now. It just... This just brings it up to code with the new laws starting January 1st.
Motion approved. Second.
Discussion?
So back to that question.
Right.
So I can't find it in here, but I... It was like 10 or 12 items, and it said, "Without the owner's permission," it was an issue, but... So with the owner's permission, it wasn't, or...
Yeah. The Smoke Free Illinois Act applies to smoking of cannabis, so you cannot smoke cannabis anyplace where you cannot smoke cigarettes, which, you know, a business, you can't smoke cigarettes in a business even if... With or without permission.
How about like the Hookah Lounge?
The Hookah Lounge...
Or like a cigar shop?
It... No, you can't. That's a good question, and there are some ambiguities in the state legislation, and a lot of people have been asking for clarifiers. That's one area. I think it's clear myself in the existing legislation that you cannot, because you cannot smoke in a public place, and a public place is defined as a place where other people can see you, and other people could see you in a Hookah Lounge, so I think that...
And anybody could go in there. Yeah, so it'd be a public...
Yes. So basically, the whole business about the Smoke Free Tobacco Act is just confusing because if they just said, "You can't smoke in a public place," it would be clear, but then they said, "You can't smoke anywhere that you can't smoke tobacco," and then that confused it. That's one of the ambiguities in the law, but I think the intention is that you cannot, and basically unless we would allow smoking in a cannabis business, which we are not allowing, you basically cannot smoke anywhere other than at your own home. One thing... I think you could probably...
On your property anywhere, not necessarily in your home, but on your property or...
Well, that's a good question, too, because again, public place is defined as any place where people can see you, and if you don't have a fence in your backyard, people can probably see you in your backyard. But I think, you know... I mean, that is an issue. I think practically speaking, the answer probably is, yes, you can, but I'm sure the police department's going to get a call from a neighbor.
We're going to get tons of those calls that the neighbor who doesn't like it...
Yes.
Is watching their neighbor walk around their backyard, and the legislature has not addressed that particular thing. So that's going to be one of those ambiguous laws, as there are several with this, that's going to have to be worked out when somebody gets arrested, for example, for that very thing, and then they fight it, and the court says, "No, you can't," or "Yes, you can."
Yes.
All right. Well, thanks.
Yep.
Well, once it goes to court, it'll...
That's right. There'll be some room for people to argue.
If I would add just one more thing real quickly. When we talk about cannabis in general at the staff level regularly, there's been times where Mike has even put it in our ordinances, "We'll adhere to things that are already in the state law sometimes just on the sheer fact that the state law may change, and therefore, we might still want to keep it if we're allowed to on the books for us locally." So that rule with the businesses, which... You're right, it's in there. I found it. It could be that right now, you can't do it anyways, but maybe in the future, they change that. But locally, now we have that in our code, and maybe it upholds.
Yeah, I guarantee we'll be revisiting this probably several times.
Chief, what would be an example of perhaps a ticket or a state ticket and a...
Well, the way it is now, like if you mentioned like a ticket, there are certain offenses now, like if you're possessing it like under a certain amount, you can get... We can adjudicate it locally because it's such a small amount, and the amounts have obviously changed. But the premise would still be basically the same, is that with certain amounts, we could write them a local ticket. Other amounts, you would have to actually arrest them and formally charge them. So it just... It leaves some leeway there, how people are charged differently with different amounts and different offenses, whatever it may be.
Thank you. Kind of an example is if someone is doing 50 miles over the speed limit, you could write that as a local ticket, but you could also write it as a state ticket, which might carry a heavier fine, and the police have some leeway right now how to write that ticket.
Yeah, absolutely. And the difference is who prosecutes it. Locally, for example, would be like our village attorneys. State would be the state's attorney's office.
But if it's a local ordinance violation, the municipality gets more of a percentage of that revenue, right?
They do, but you can't... Jail time can't be imposed, and so, you know, there's kind of a trade-off there in terms of what the appropriate thing to do is.
Yeah, that's why. I mean, there's always going to be certain ones you're going to charge, you know, the state, whether you're going to get more money or not. That has nothing to do with it, you know, if it needs to go on somebody's record or it's a more serious offense.
One thing I would note about Mark's question is that it says, "In a private residence or business establishment without the consent of the owner." So, you know, if you're over your neighbor's house and your neighbor doesn't want you to smoke, you can't.
Well, it's interesting they add the "business" part to it, because I thought it was at your home. So when they threw that in there, that kind of like...
That's an example of the confusion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why would they add "business"?
Property owners can ban it, too. Like if I own an apartment complex, I can ban it throughout the whole building as well.